Hi Harvey.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm well, how about yourself?
I'm well, well, yes.
Good, I'm good. How's everyone else as well? Well, Madam Mayor?
Hey, how are you guys doing tonight?
Hey, Madam Mayor, how you doing?
Hi, how are you? I have two, I'm looking at the computer, it says 5:58 and my phone says 5:55, which one is right?
5:55.
5:55, okay. So we got five more minutes, thank you.
Yeah, at least that's what my computer says and I guess computers never make a mistake. I do, but that's the computer.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, how are you?
Good evening.
Sarah?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Baker, it's beautiful where you are, where are you? I don't like your point back there, hold on now.
I'm actually in my computer room with the virtual background I was able to bring up in Aurora Borealis.
Oh, that's pretty.
That's beautiful.
Yes, it is.
I was like, what park is that at? That's not guest park, I don't know.
So everyone's aware, Mr. Baker did send out an email saying that he won't be able to attend tonight.
Okay, thank you.
I know, he said he may not be able to, so it was confirmed.
It's been confirmed, yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you. We got two more minutes. Yeah, Mr. Costman, the monitor over here.
Not yet.
Yeah, I'm here. Hi, Carter.
Good evening.
Hello, everyone.
Mr. Fairbrother, could you give me access to record on my computer, please?
Yes, let me see.
I think when you hover over the word "record" on the bottom part, and when you hover over it, it'll say "allow" others to record.
Stop recording, pause. Make a, I can make you a host, I can allow record, yep. You should have it now.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes.
Ryan, do we have anybody in the council chambers?
It's now six o'clock. Good evening, everyone. I called to order the East Point City Council meeting, I'm sorry, the show cause hearing on Tuesday, September 1st, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Please call the roll.
Here Owens.
Here.
Counselperson Baker is absent. Counselperson Curly?
Yes.
Counselperson DeMonico?
Here.
And Counselperson Lucido?
Here, sorry.
Our next item is the hearing of the public. We will open up the hearing of the public, anybody who would like to speak on behalf of any of these properties, maybe it's a resident or actually one of the property owners, you're welcome to speak now.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, I have a camera open and available in the city council chambers, it is on. If a member of the public is over there, which I do not believe anyone is present currently, all they have to do is click the unmute button. The, the computer is located on the podium where members of the public would typically address members of the mayor and the city council.
Is anybody in there? Is there something, Ms. Van Heren was in there, let me go check real quick, I'm gonna take a quick peek. I don't think anyone's in there.
Say the court reporter.
Now we have her in there, so no one is there, so we can continue. Do you have anyone in, in the Zoom meeting? That's on the screen that wants to participate, Mr. Fairbrother.
If anyone would like to participate, if they could please raise their hand in the participants box so that I can call on you one at a time, please. Well, I see Mr. Mark Merlanti would like to speak, so Mr. Merlanti, the floor is now yours.
Thank you. Again, my name is Mark Merlanti, I'm an attorney and I'm representing Arvind Singh Mandair, who's also joining us through Zoom. I've been in contact with Richard Albright over the last couple of weeks, as well as with Gary La Duke and Ms. Van Heren regarding property at 23040 Piper. I spoke with Richard this afternoon, he said that we were the sixth item, but I'm certainly prepared to proceed now and bring the council up to speed in what's happened, there's been a lot of activity in the last couple of weeks. And on behalf of my client, we appreciate the opportunity to address the council and let you know that my client hired a new management company in February for the specific purpose of hiring a larger company that-
Excuse me, sir, let me, I'm interrupting, how are you tonight? Do we have anybody else on these, on these other show cause hearings, because if he's here, I don't want to have him wait all the way to the end, we can close it, you don't have to speak on the hearing of the public, we'll let you speak on that property.
Okay.
So we can just move that property up to number one, so you don't have to wait till we talk about all the other ones. Is there anybody else on any other properties on this, on the show cause hearing tonight? Do you see anyone?
I see that there is another individual, well, a few other individuals, there's Gary, there's Ken, and there's Morgan on the call.
Okay.
Did any of you guys wish to address the board under the hearing of the public?
Or do they have any properties on here?
No.
If they want to speak on.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I see no other hands raised, so if you'd like, I think it's probably safe to close the floor.
Okay, if we don't close the floor for the, the hearing of the public, it may really go for it, neighbors or something like that, but since you're here on the actual property, we'll let you speak, so you can take your time, because it's over hearing of the public consists of three minutes and it sounds like you got over three minutes, so right now, we're gonna close the hearing of the public and we're going to go to 23040 Piper, which is the last property on, on this list, so we can let this, this man proceed. So then, get a council time to get to that page, okay, get to that property.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for being here. So when all the council is ready? 23040 Piper, Ms. Van Heren, are you here today?
Yes, I am, Marons.
Um, no, Mary Van Heren, Mary Van Heren looks different tonight.
I'm here tonight. I do? Yes.
He said, so how are you doing? So before we go into asking you some questions, sir, we're gonna talk to Ms. Van Heren, who's the director of the building department, then we're gonna talk to our lawyer and then we'll let you proceed, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Ms. Van Heren.
Typically, Madam Mayor, we, we have our attorney start it off and then I'd be happy to respond with my information when he's complete.
I apologize, that is how it goes, we haven't did this in a while, so, yes, Mr. Albright, please, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, I just wanted to begin by addressing the court reporter first, can you hear me okay, Ms. Price? Okay, you're on mute?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, and so you're transcribing everything that's being said here this evening?
Correct.
Wonderful. Did you get a copy of the agenda from our office?
I did.
Okay, because I noticed there was another court reporter at our office here today, Chris, and she thought she may be the court reporter handling the court reporting this evening, so I, I had my assistant actually give her a hard copy today, but I just wanted to make sure that you had the hard copy as well.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, again, Madam Mayor, members of council, my name is Richard Albright for the record, and this is the show cause hearing regarding the property located at 23040 Piper. This is the first time in the city's history that a show cause hearing has been conducted via Zoom, so far, so good. What I'd like to do before getting to Ms. Van Heren is just having several exhibits entered into the record. The first is a memorandum prepared by Ms. Van Heren dated August 24th, 2020, with a recommendation from city administration. Another document I'd like to have entered into the record is the notice of this evening's proceedings prepared by the city attorney's office, and that paragraph now, or that letter rather, has a new paragraph which provides for these hearings being conducted via Zoom and places interested parties on notice of how to sign in and how to download the Zoom app. I'd like to also have entered into the record the previous notices of hearings along with the transcript from the dangerous building hearing, a proof of posting indicating that notice of this evening's proceedings was posted at the subject property on August 21st, 2020, and also an updated owner and encumbrance report that was prepared by Circuit Title Agency, and that document is dated August 20th, 2020. Madam Court Reporter, I know you may not have a copy of that owner and encumbrance report update, but our office will be sure to get you a copy for the record. That being said, Madam Mayor, I'm happy to turn the proceedings over to Ms. Van Heren for questions.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Van Heren, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. This property has been under a dangerous building process since July of 2018 for failure to register and certify the vacant structure. We held a dangerous building hearing on February 18th of, it says 2029 in my memo, but that would be 2019. The tenant who had been occupying the property was finally evicted in March of 2019, and the management company was able to enter the premises to clean it and get it ready for inspections. The property was finally inspected under the vacant structure process in October of 2019, and again on August 24th, just last week. The city has cut the grass twice this season, it appears that the owners are not maintaining the exterior of the property. The inspection resulted in violations that have not yet been corrected, and the remaining violations are detailed in this memo here. They include cleaning and sanitizing and painting the mildewed walls in the basement, repair or replace the loose fixtures in the basement and kitchen, supply cover plates to all outlets and switches around the, in the entire interior of the house, secure and lock the garage entry and roll-up door, eliminate all debris from inside the garage, and provide a necessary fall cleanup around the entire property. Our records show that the owner resides in Dexter, Michigan, the property manager is in Southfield, Michigan. It appears that the water bills have not been paid and they currently owe $615 and $1,004 went on delinquent taxes in October of 2019, and over 3,000 in May of 2019. We recommend requiring the property to be certified as a vacant structure, get that approval complete within 45 days, and that the water bill is paid in full and the taxes are paid or scheduled for demolition.
Thank you, Ms. Van Heren. Sir, where's Ms. Merlanti?
Yes.
Frankly, and you are the lawyer for this property or the property manager?
I am the attorney for the owner, Mr. Singh.
Okay.
Mr. Mandair, who's with us today as well.
Okay.
I was, I was retained on August 13th, I was referred to Mr. Mandair by the new management company, JMZ Management, with whom I have a relationship. So that, that's how I, I came into the file, and since that point, I've tried to communicate with the city. The city has been more than helpful in helping me get up to speed. As I mentioned during the public comment section of the meeting, I, I've spoken with Gary La Duke, I've spoken with Ms. Van Heren, I've spoken a couple times with Mr. Albright, everyone has been quite helpful. We were able to arrange an inspection, we needed to get access to the property ourselves, and which we arranged for on last Monday, the inspection took place, Ms. Van Heren has read the inspection into, into the report. Our plan is to make the repairs. The, the new management company was retained in February for the specific purpose of hiring contractors to make repairs. Prior to that, Mr. Mandair had worked with a manager who was really a one-man operation. He did not have the resources or the contacts to schedule the kinds of repairs that this property needs. So that was put in place in February and then things, of course, came to a stop due to COVID-19. The, the prior manager, Mr. Methano Ali Bay, has been very cooperative with me and he's, he pulled off the website from the city some cancellation notices, there was repairs that were, excuse me, inspections were scheduled in March and a couple in May, and those were canceled by the city for understandable reasons. But I've spoken with the management company as recently as today. They have placed the report out for bid. They're, they gave it to a contractor with whom they're very familiar, they're expecting a bid at any moment now. I emphasized with the management company that the contractor needs to be timely here. I, I indicated that this is not some home remodeling project, this is a property involved in a proceeding that has lingered for a time, and my client has made the necessary changes in terms of the management company to allow these repairs to be made now. The report indicates 30 days, obviously, the report was 45 days for the compliance and for the payment of the taxes, et cetera, which I don't foresee any problem with. The, I am going to be reviewing whatever the contractor submits to make sure that there are appropriate performance dates. I've spoke with Richard this afternoon, I let him know that I will be making interim reports so that we are on target for our 45-day compliance. The goal here is compliance, and the client's ultimate goal is once these repair issues have been addressed satisfactorily, then we will engage with the landlord certification process. I'm, of course, hoping that based on making the repairs from this report, that there will be no additional repairs needed for the landlord certificate process, the certificate will be issued, and then the property will be rented, as Ms. Van Heren mentioned, there was an eviction of a prior tenant. I do a lot of eviction work, including I've done some recently here in East Point, and sometimes you need to get the tenant out before you can address the situation that sounds like the situation here, but the property is vacant now, there is no plan to place a tenant in the property at this time. There's no plan to do that until there's a certificate issued. My client pays a mortgage on this property every month, he's not a professional landlord, he's a professor at the University of Michigan. I am, I am very glad that he's hired JMZ Management so that these matters may be appropriately and timely addressed, and as I mentioned, I will keep Richard advised as we proceed, and, and our hope is that we have all these matters addressed, we have a reinspection take place, and then this proceeding may be dismissed.
Hey, thank you, I think I'm kind of confused, we had Mr. Mandair and then you have Mr. Singh, oh, it's Mr. Mandair.
It's, it's the same person.
Okay, okay, let's see, different names up there. Okay, council? You'd like to speak on this property, please?
Sure.
Okay, Councilman.
Oh, I appreciate you, Mr. Merlanti and Mr. Mandair for coming out. Well, as you can see, you're the only folks that came out today, so I appreciate that, and explaining the, the whole process here, I think, you know, these are somewhat minor issues that I think we can get taken care of, I don't know if anyone disagrees, it sounds like you have a good plan for these 45 days, and, right, we say, we see the water bills paid and taxes are paid, right? I think that's, I, I did also get dropped for a minute earlier, I think, when you were speaking, Mr. Merlanti, so sorry if I missed a piece of information, but if no one disagrees, then I'll, I'll motion that we give 45 days here to the homeowner, you know, to the owners of 23040 Piper to finish the issues from the inspection that was just done on the property.
Let's support.
Let me see, one thing on here, it says they don't, I don't know who wrote this out, they don't pay the water bill, and then it says currently the amount, and then it said we recommend the property vacant structure approval is complete within 45 days, it says the water bill is paid in full and taxes are paid or scheduled for demolition.
Oh, I did missread that, I think you're, so there is a $615 bill?
So was it paid or not paid?
Not paid.
Like it's not paid, okay.
I will address that with the management company and with Mr. Mandair, and once we verify that that is an appropriate bill, we will pay it, and if there is it may be owed by some tenant, but obviously, it's the landlord's responsibility to pay it, and we will address that.
Well, that is why we ask you to let us know when it's vacant or occupied and things like that, or those same reasons you just mentioned, saying that you can blame it on the tenant when we already know that the tenant has been out almost, I think, if I'm not wrong, is it about a year now, so we can't say. So that should have been taken care of a year ago.
This is the, this is the first I've heard of it, Richard, I believe, may have mentioned it to me in our call late this afternoon, but I will be in contact with JMZ Management tomorrow, I may send them an email at the end of, at the end of this proceeding today to provide that information so that they can check on the water bill and the taxes, properly communicate with Mr. Mandair, and get those bills paid.
Okay, and also, we need that information for the vacant, what was that, Ms. Van Heren?
So we would, if there's a new management company, we'd like a revision in the application for the vacant property structure, just so we have the current and proper contact info.
I will, I will make sure that gets to you, JMZ Management has an office in Novi.
When can you get that?
I will get that.
We can get that down, sir.
I, I will get that done probably tomorrow.
Okay.
Is there any particular form I need to put that on, Ms. Van Heren? Is there any particular form I need to put that on, uh, Ms. Van Heren, or can I simply send you an email? Or have the person at J M Z Management send you an email?
Yeah, i- if they send me an email, I'll, I'll send them a copy of the application.
Right, that's what we'll do.
Okay, knowing that the water bill isn't paid or the taxes aren't paid. You guys want to keep the, um, Mister Demonic, you want to continue with the forty-five days? With your motion?
Sure. Why? Did you want to give them more time or less time?
Um, well, I, I want the, the water bill paid and the taxes paid. Um, how long you been knowing that the, the water bill has been, um, delinquent? Since two thousand nine. So that's almost been a year.
Madam Mayor, ma'am, I, I don't know if Councilman Demonic wants to, um, address his motion, but he already made a motion. I mean, there hasn't been support to it yet, so we can. Oh, there has been?
I, I, I supported it.
Okay, I think he's trying to amend it.
I didn't know there was a support, so that's why where my concern was. I didn't hear Mister Curly support it. Then having the conversation's fine.
I mean, Mister Curly, if you don't mind, we could amend it to add that the water bill's paid as part of this also.
I, I would agree with the.
Yeah, did you hear that? Where's Mister Rolanti?
Yes.
Yes, we want to have, if you heard, the, the, the new motion was put on the table to pay the water bills and the taxes. I'll let Mister Demonic, um, redo that motion so you can better understand it. Um, Councilman Demonic.
Sure, yeah, mayor, I'd like that we give, um, Mister Mandair and Mister Merlanti forty-five days on two-three-zero-four-zero piper to fix all the violations in the inspection and certify the property is vacant as well as they need to bring the water bill and taxes up to date if they're not.
Support.
Thank you. Move and support it. Please call the row. I'm sorry, um, councilman, did you have to say anything to say on this?
No, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Call the row, please.
Counselperson Demonic?
Yes.
Counselperson Curly?
Yes.
Counselperson Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. Thank you, Mister Malanti for coming in tonight. You have any more questions, please? Uh, email either one of us and also, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My question is, how do we certify the property as vacant? Is there something you need from, uh, me or from the management company to verify that it's vacant?
Ms. Van Heren, please.
Yes, I can respond to that. Um, as soon as those violations are corrected, we'll have, um, Gary La Duke come back out, inspect that everything's taken care of and that will certify the vacant structure.
Thank you, that makes sense.
Also, email Ms. Van Heren, um, if you want those, um, instructions written out. Step by step by step, we can do that for you, so you don't miss anything.
And Ms. Van Heren, are you able to, if I send you an email, can you tell me exactly what the water bill is and what the taxes are? And the period's covered, so I can forward that to the management company?
Because you'll have to find out from the county. Um, I'm not sure. I don't have access to that, but I can check on the water bill for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the property for one-six-five-five-four Collinson with Robert Lynch and McComb County Treasurer regarding the east, um, of course, the hearing officer's order to get, uh, demolition. Anyone here on this property tonight? Saying, um, Mister Albright?
Thank you, uh, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Richard Albright, appearing on behalf of the City of East Point. Uh, this is the date and time for a continuation show cause here and regarding the real property located at one-six-five-five-four Collinson. Uh, before turning, uh, the matter over to Ms. Van Heren, I'd like to have several exhibits entered into the record. Uh, the first of which is a memorandum prepared by Ms. Van Heren dated August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty. Also, a notice of this evening's proceedings, uh, prepared by the city attorney's office dated August twenty-first, twenty-twenty. Uh, all of the previous notices that have been sent to the interested parties of record, uh, related to this property, along with the transcripts from the previous hearings. Uh, proof of posting indicating that, uh, notice of tonight's proceedings was posted at the subject property back on August twenty-first, twenty-twenty. And also an updated owner and encumbrance report prepared by Chirco Title Agency dated August twenty-twentieth, twenty-twenty, indicating that the owner of record now is Robert Lee Lynch. Madam Mayor, I'd like to have those, uh, documents entered into the record as exhibits. And at this time, I would turn over, uh, the proceeding to Ms. Van Heren to answer any questions.
Ms. Van Heren?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. The dangerous building process was started on this property for failure to certify as a vacant structure and maintain the property. It was started in October of two thousand seventeen. We held a dangerous building hearing in two thousand seventeen and three previous show cause hearings, which were held in September of eighteen, February of nineteen, and March of twenty. On twelve-six-two thousand eighteen, we inspected the property with an administrative search warrant and found the house in somewhat deteriorated condition. The owner obtained a roof permit in February of two thousand eighteen with a final inspection disapproving the permit work. They did, they failed to have open roof inspection and they had inadequate ventilation in the roof. The interior showed evidence of damage to the plaster ceilings from the roof leak. Insulation hanging from the ceilings, drywall missing in portions of the ceilings. At the show cause hearing held in March of twenty-twenty, City Council gave Mister Lynch sixty days to finalize the repairs and certify the vacant structure. I've not heard from Mister Lynch regarding any of this work. The taxes are not being paid. Um, it's shown, the updated taxes are shown in our owner encumbrance report. I think it would be a shame to order demolition of this home, um, but I don't believe it's productive to continue oversight of this through the dangerous building process. We've invoiced owner eleven times during this process for a total of six thousand dollars. I look to our city attorney and our city council to decide how we should proceed.
Thank you, Ms. Van Heren. Counsel?
Sure, I could go first again, mayor.
Okay, thank you.
I think just quick, so on this, I think, you know, we're always, uh, stuck in a decision of giving more time to the owner or demoing, you know, two very extreme scenarios. And I spoke with Mister Albright about other options in between because I think, you know, I agree with you, Ms. Van Heren. Silly to keep doing things here. We're gonna end up, you know, uh, this six thousand dollars is gonna end up, you know, if, if this goes into tax foreclosure, someone's gonna end up buying it. We'll get the money back, I guess, eventually, but ob- obviously it's not of too much use right now. But I was just wondering if we could at least fix up, uh, some of the external items. Uh, Mister Albright, you know, I, especially on this property, um, just like one very obvious thing. It looks like there's some sort of ladder on the roof of the garage and the garage door is basically off the track and just, you know, does not look very nice. Um, and it looks like there's a open window at the house, you know, if we could at least like investigate those three items. The rest of the house looks pretty decent from the outside, not too bad. But I was just curious, uh, Mister Albright, if you could touch on what we'd be able to do there at least so that we can at least make some of these properties look nicer, because obviously they've been, you know, somewhat of a, an issue with us like this one for many years now.
Yes, of course, uh, Councilman Demonic, I'd be happy to, uh, address those concerns. Uh, the city's ordinance allows the city council to order a structure to be demolished. Uh, within that very broad power of demolition, uh, necessarily is the ability to or the right to correct any code violations on the, uh, the exterior. And then, of course, uh, bill the property owner for those, uh, charges. Uh, this may be a case where this property ends up through tax reversion. Uh, and the city is the owner. Uh, I would note in looking at the, uh, updated owner and encumbrance report that there is, um, a notice filed by the McComb County Treasurer for non-payment of the twenty-eighteen property taxes in the amount of seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. There are also unpaid, uh, winter, uh, twenty-nineteen taxes due in the amount of one thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. And that includes an eighty-two dollar and thirty-six, thirty-six cents bill for delinquent water and also a one thousand, two hundred and two, uh, dollar, um, charge for abatement. Uh, the twenty-nineteen summer taxes in the amount of five thousand, three hundred and six dollars and fifty-one cents. Uh, those are also due and the, uh, twenty-twenty summer taxes in the amount of two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. Uh, tha- those, uh, are also due. So there are substantial unpaid taxes on this property. It would appear that the, um, current owner of the property, uh, became the owner pursuant to a judgment of divorce back in, uh, fall of twenty-seventeen. Uh, since that time, it doesn't appear as if any property taxes have been paid. Uh, but, uh, again, going back to Councilmember, uh, Demonic's question, yes. A motion could be made, uh, requiring, uh, either the property owner or, um, instructing city administration to go out and abate some of the, uh, code violations and, uh, charge those back to the, uh, the property owner. And ultimately, if they're not paid, then those would become a lien on the estate itself.
I was just gonna ask wh- what everyone else thought about that. Nothing, you know, major. Just make sure some of those things are picked up, uh, fixed up, especially if we're going to, as Mister Albright said, probably get this property back. And it sounds like, I mean, this is the fourth show cause hearing, so I'm just going to assume at this point, we're not going to get anything done with the property through the owner.
Um, what about the roof? My concern is, I mean, even if we're gonna get the property back, if the roof is leaking and causing damage, I mean, at this time, should we not just order for, uh, the new roof to be placed on the home? Because it's just gonna cause more damage if the longer it's sitting there. I feel like the roof and securing the house to make sure that no one can enter it. I don't know if we would have the right to, um, possibly cover those side windows so they stay closed to prevent people from going into the home. Because I'm worried that with the window being open, that people are entering it. Just to make sure.
Is there, is there any one that can find out from the county when that tax reversion? I'm just wanting to find out when that might happen.
Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Curly, I believe that would happen, uh, next spring with regard to the, uh, the current, uh, lien that's been filed on the property by the county.
Well, it's obvious we're not gonna get him. The taxes aren't gonna be paid. But I think, I think, uh, I, I think Sarah's right. We need to close the window and get some things done so there's not further damage.
Yeah, the property could be secured, I'm sure, and should be secured.
Go ahead, Mister.
I could make a comment. Um, the roof has been replaced. But the damage, uh, the damage on the interior of the, of the structure is, is, uh, occurred prior to the roof being replaced. But he didn't get an approval on the roof replacement because he didn't add adequate ventilation and, um, didn't have an open roof inspection.
Well, as long as it's not leaking anymore, that's my concern. I would say if we were to turn around and sell it, if we could do get a back for back tax, we'd have put in new ventilation, but that doesn't have to be done right now.
Right. I agree.
Where's the ladder that come off the roof of the garage?
Yeah, I agree with all of council. I think we should, no, we got a bad reception. I think we should, um, come up with something where we don't let, when we know it's gonna be our property, we don't let it get that bad to where the fixtures are, uh, tremendous in cost. Well, you know, so maybe we can, you know, later on, create some type of, um, policy when, because I know we have something with the grass cutting and things like that, uh, Mister Albright. And, uh, I know Mister Demonic said something, um, in the charter where if it's a nuisance and things like that, we can fix certain things. But can we put some type of time limit if they don't fix it, that we go ahead and go ahead and fix it ourselves? Just like the grass, you know, if we see, you know, especially we see it's being prolonged and we gotta put, we gonna get paid regardless, so. And it keeps our, uh, housing, you know, our houses and our neighborhoods looking nice and not waiting on the property owner to fix it whenever they feel like it. And then, um, they don't do nothing about it. And then we're right back here and then we own the house and we gotta put all these thousands of dollars in it on top of paying these water bills and things like that.
Yeah, the, 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 the city's ordinance, Madam Mayor, um, provides the city council with very wide latitude from the most extreme remedy of demolition of the structures all the way to the, the most less extreme, which would be to allow the property owner to have additional time in order to comply with the city ordinances.
So we're, so if we see certain things and they don't fix it, we can fix it ourselves?
If that was, that, that could be part of any motion that, um, member of council could make, yes.
Okay, I think Mister Demonic says some things already concerning that motion. I agree with that. Um, we can move forward. Mister Demonic?
Sure, I guess, uh, I could make a motion then here. Let me know, Mister Albright, if there's anything else you'd like me to include. But I would say then, on the property one-six-five-five-four Collinson, um, I'd like to see the city, uh, check the exterior for any issues we could resolve right now, such as the item on the garage of the, uh, the roof of the garage. The garage door looks like it's maybe just off the track. If we can just add that on the track and secure the building, because it looks like there's at least one open window. Um, if there's any though, anything wrong with the roof that needs to be addressed immediately, as Ms. Lucido said, if we do that also, and just, I think, any other various items that would damage the property before we received it back in tax foreclosure.
Counselmember, uh, Demonic, do you, do you want to add, in order to allow the, uh, uh, the city the right to enter the structure that, um, the, uh, city administration should seek an administrative search warrant from the thirtieth district court?
Okay, sure, yeah, for checking the roof leaks and things like that. When was the last time again we were? Oh, we inspected it two years ago, now, right, almost two years ago, twelve-six-two thousand eighteen? Counsel, do you think we should go back in probably then, right?
Yeah.
I think so.
I think so.
Okay. I'll, yeah, add that to the motion then that we obtain an administrative search warrant to do. So look at the roof and other items.
Thank you.
You do support on that?
So motion.
Yes, we need support on that.
I'll support.
Okay, go ahead.
Counselperson Demonic?
Yes.
Counselperson Lucido?
Yes.
Counselperson Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. Again, um, Mister Albright, when maybe I didn't say it right or you didn't, um, explain it correctly. Now, when we give out, uh, nuisance abatement for grass and things like that, we give them a certain amount of time, correct? Just like, and then we go cut the grass.
Yeah, Ms. Van Heren, if you could address that, I know, our office doesn't send out notices for grass cutting, but, uh, Mary, how does, uh, uh, city hall handle that, uh, something like that?
Uh, so typically, um, notices are sent out in advance of the city doing any work to give the property owner an opportunity to take care of it themselves. And, um, we, we've never been in a position where we've gone and done anything on someone's roof or, or, um, repaired garage doors. But we would send out notice advising them in advance that council had ordered these repairs to be made and, um, see if they do it themselves first.
Yeah, and that's what I, I guess that's where I'm going towards, to give them a certain amount of time. You know, it's a certain amount of time you give someone to cut their grass and a certain amount of time we would give them to fix certain things and then we're, we will fix it and build them. But I want to do it in a fair amount of time and not, you know, I don't know people's, you know, financial situations, say you need to fix your roof. It's three thousand dollars, you don't have the money. But when is a good lim, you know, timeframe where we can say, you know, get this fixed and we're gonna do it?
Yeah, and, and I don't think we'd know that until we actually, you know, really saw, um, what had to be done. I mean, the garage may be, door may be off the, the tracks, but maybe it's off the tracks because it's, it's damaged and it can't go on the tracks. And so now we'd be looking at, you know, replacing a garage door at about, you know, eight hundred or a thousand dollars. And we know that because I replaced one a few years ago myself. Um, but, yeah, so I, I think in all fairness, we'd look and assess what had to be done. Um, no, give them proper notification and, um, you know, try to have a conversation with them before we did anything.
Yeah, especially I think is, you know, when it's close to a certain amount of time, like year, like a year or two. When I, when we see that it's gonna be ours, we don't wanna be a city just going around fixing up people's houses, you know, so. Um, so it's something to think about.
My concern on this one is that we didn't really say what we would do afterwards. We're almost assuming that we're gonna. almost assuming that we're gonna obtain it through a tax foreclosure. But what if we don't? Are we just gonna keep on doing a dangerous building, you know, indefinitely on them, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Albright, what do you think about what Ms. Van Herren just said?
Well, the, the city can go, conduct the administrative search warrant and find out how the interior is looking. Hopefully, the property owner, after he receives the transcript from tonight's proceeding, along with a cover letter from our office indicating that this is what the council has ordered, he, he will either contact our office or contact Ms. Van Herren and try to work something out. If there are violations that, that the city is going to take it upon itself to repair, we would just simply send out a, a letter to the property indicating that those violations are gonna be corrected by the, by the city within a reasonable period of time unless the property owner does that. So it would give them an opportunity. It's, it's somewhat akin to when the, the city council has ordered demolition and the property owner has not demolished any structures on the property themselves. And so what our office does is after getting notice from city administration that the structures have not been demolished, we send out a customary letter to the property owner advising them that the city is going to be coming out to demolish the structure and that they, they should remove any personal property from the house, personal effects, mementos, anything of a personal nature that they may want to, you know, save or salvage. And if they do not do that, then the, then the city will come out and demolish. We never put a timeframe in there because even at that point, we still don't know when the demolition is going to occur. Once city administration does find out, though, that the demolition is gonna be imminent, Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, usually we, we attempt then to reach the property owner just to let them know that it's, it's gonna be happening here in the next couple of weeks or so.
Absolutely, we would do that.
Yes.
So, let's move forward. Now, Ms. Van Herren, last question. When we send out notices, do we send out assistance and resources to these residents about how they can pay their taxes with, you know, different type of payment plans? And also, McComb County has a housing rehabilitation program. Do we send out those resources and let them know? Because I hate to demolish houses. And as a city, we hate to take people home. But a lot of people don't know about these resources. So do we send those things out to them?
We do not.
Okay. Can, you think we can start doing that? Give them different resources in how to fix their homes and that McComb County provides, and also assistance on how they can pay their taxes and things like that with the county treasurer's office?
Sure. I, I don't know, you, you mean for every notice that goes out for everything? Every violation?
Well, yeah.
My only concern is most of these homes, like, they're owned by, like, companies. They're not owned, I mean, I understand what you're saying. And I guess, if it was, was an owner occupied home, I would understand doing that. But I don't know if we should go through, supplying these resources to these management companies of all these rentals? Like, if you purchase the home to rent out, you're in the rental business. Why would we help you keep your rental business going and keep these homes and use these resources? They should be going to homeowners, not to landlords. Like, you know, and so, I mean, it's an owner occupied home, yes, I would agree. I wouldn't mind them, I mean, when they come to the city or contact Mary Van Herren at that time, if they are a homeowner, her giving them, but just mailing them with these show cause hearings, I don't know if I would agree with that because most of these, I would say 90% that we get are usually owned by, you know, they're, they're rental home owned by an investor.
And I would say that our, our code enforcement staff has certainly access to and is aware of the programs offered by the county. And we have little cards that the county has provided us, you know, some of them are for seniors specifically, and some of them are for low to moderate income, that kind of thing. So we do have information that we give them, you know, when they indicate to us that, gee, I'd like to replace my roof, but I don't have, I don't have the resources for it.
Okay.
We hear that frequently. And then we always provide that kind of information or provide them with information on Habitat for Humanity. But it just isn't done for every, for every property. It's, it's more on a selective basis or when they indicate that there's a, a concern.
Okay. Well, no, of course not for, you know, the, the rental properties. I mean, I read all this information. I know it's for only low income, so I was talking about only residential people, of course. You know, I know a lot of people in that situation. I wanna make sure we get that out to those people, even if we have to put on our website or something like that, you know, just to make them aware of the resource and things like that. Of course, not the property owners, but some of the property owners, that's how they pay their bills with their properties. So we have to make sure, you know, we help them as well, too. So let's go ahead and go forward with the, the location of 22020 Cushing with the Horizon Trust Company, Screaming Eagle Properties LLC and occupants, starting with Mr. Albright.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. Richard Albright appearing on behalf of the City of East Point. This is a date and time set for a show cause hearing regarding the property located at 22020 Cushing. Before proceeding further, I'd like to have several exhibits entered into the record, the first of which is a memorandum prepared by Ms. Van Herren dated August 24, 2020, with a recommendation from city administration. The next document is a notice of this evening's proceedings prepared by the city attorney's office dated August 21, 2020, which was served via certified mail and also posting at the subject property. The proof of posting indicating that notice of tonight's proceedings was posted back on August 21 of 2020, an owner and encumbrance report prepared by Chirco Title Agency dated August 20, 2020, showing the owner of the property to be Horizon Trust Company custodian, FBO Kenneth Wong IRA, and all of the other past notices related to this case, including the transcripts from the previous hearings as well. That being said, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Van Herren for the proceedings.
Thank you, Ms. Van Herren.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. The dangerous building process was started on this property for failure to certify as a vacant structure and failure to maintain the property in January of 2019. The hearing was held in April of 2019. No one appeared at the hearing, and the hearing officer recommended certification within 60 days or send it to city council for a demo order. We held a show cause hearing before the city council on February 19, 2020, and council approved obtaining an administrative search warrant to inspect the interior. An inspection was conducted on March 17, 2020 with police accompaniment. I found the condition of the interior to be generally void of personal belongings. The home was generally in old but stable condition. There was no evidence of hazards or structural concerns. There's been no water used since about September of 2017. The water bill for the ready to serve fees typically gets charged to taxes. Payment of taxes for the summer of 2019, winter of 18, summer of 18 have been made. We do show that taxes are unpaid for 2019 winter and 2020 summer. The address for the owner is in Albuquerque, New Mexico. The property ownership has remained unchanged since the purchase in 2013. We've done a couple of grass cut, cuttings for this property and a couple of cleanups. The property owner is not maintaining the property. There's been no communication or contact with the owner. We recommend city council order the owner to comply with the requirements regarding the vacant structure registration and ordinances regarding the maintenance within 60 days or to schedule it for demo.
Thank you, Ms. Van Herren. This sounds like another one of your homes, Councilwoman Demonicus, that you wanna get fixed up.
Yeah, I think this one's a little further away from, yeah, what do the taxes look like? It's a little further away from foreclosure, I think, than the other one.
The, members of council, the 2019 winter taxes are showing that they were paid. According to this, the summer 2020 taxes in the amount of $1,424.64 are due.
I think I'm just at the point where if we, going back and forth two, two or three years with these companies, and they're not fixing up these, fixing up anything, let's do the basic stuff to make our city look good on the outside, whatever, whatever we need to fix and charge it to their, you know, to their taxes.
Yeah, the, the owner of the property, Horizon Trust Company, shows an address in Albuquerque, New Mexico. So they were served at that address. Also, of course, the, the property itself received notice of tonight's proceedings. And then, just to, in case there was any discrepancies, we also served the grantor who sold the property to the current owner back in 2013. We sent them notice of all of the proceedings as well, and they have an address located in Utah.
I've been looking at this house for, this has been an eyesore for a while. I've been seeing this house for a year or so, even when I was, before I was a mayor and a councilwoman. I mean, I've seen this for a while. So what do you think, Ms. Lucido?
Oh, I was just, I didn't know, I noticed a couple other people joining our meeting. I didn't know if anyone was here to talk about this.
Thank you. Is anyone here to speak on 22020 Cushing?
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilman Crowe.
Yeah, thank you. I, I too drove by it, and it is pretty much in disrepair. And these proceedings have been gone for some time. However, maybe by us saying that we give them 60 days to begin to correct the violations, it's certainly be a wake-up call for them.
Well, they haven't been a wake-up call in two years. So what do you think?
The last thing that any owner of a house wants to do is have a wake-up, end up with a vacant lot. So maybe this could be a wake-up call.
Well, we can do 60 days, like you suggested. Councilman Crowe, 60 days, or we fix the repairs ourselves and charge them. Because the house is an eyesore, it's been like that for, for a while now. And it makes the other properties look bad. And that's not fair to the other people in that, you know, and on that street.
Yeah. Well, I agree with that.
He lives all the way in New Ha, you know, he lives, he doesn't even live in a state. So he doesn't, you know. So if I live next door to a house like that, nobody cared. That's not fair to me. So, so.
Combo of those two, Mr. Curly, Ms. Owens, if, you know, we give them 60 days to make all the repairs they need to, or at least start, if they start even on them, at least, I guess during that time, then maybe we can expect that something would get done. Or else we do some of these minor things outside again. I mean, this one, just trimming that bush up a little bit would be quite a, quite an improvement. And I think there's, this one, there's like a, a hole in the, what's it called, like in the front there? I think this was the one with the hole, and then the sidewalk blocks on the side. So I don't know if, if everyone, should we do a similar motion as the last one? I wouldn't mind, at least like the, you know, the sidewalk blocks, the side door could at least be fixed. Looks like one's just, you know.
Yeah. I drove past that one today, and I drove past it a couple times. We've been, this been, we've been bothered by this for a while now. So I'm familiar with this house. And so I'm just tired of seeing it. The next time I wanna see it, at least, you know, it looks better than this. And I think the, the, the next door neighbors, the neighbors across the street would be happy that it looks better. You know, we don't wanna have houses in our, in our neighborhood looking like haunted houses.
Yeah, I, I, I would, I would agree with what Carter just said, that between the mayor and myself, giving the notice of 60 days and yet still going out and fixing some of the things on the outside would be a start.
Okay. Councilman Demonicus, would you like to make that motion?
Sure, Mayor. I'll motion that.
Go ahead.
Okay. A motion at 22020 Cushing, that we give the owner 60 days to make, or at least start their various, you know, changes here. And if they don't start any of these updates, then we make some of these exterior changes as described, trim that bush out front, fix the, there's a hole in the front of the house, the blocks to the side door, and maybe any other items that are identified when we go out to the property after those 60 days.
I guess support, please?
I'll support.
Moving support, please call the row.
Fuman, Demonicus?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving right along. We are going to our next property at 17050 Juliana with Participation Trust, Lilian Peoples Household Finance Corporation, the second, U.S. Bank Trust, N.A., and occupants. Do we have Mr. Albright, please?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. Richard Albright on behalf of the City of East Point. This is a date and time set for a show cause hearing regarding the property located at 17050 Juliana. I'd like to have entered into the record several documents, the first of which is a memorandum prepared by Ms. Van Herren dated August 24, 2020, with a recommendation of city administration. Also, notice of this evening's proceedings prepared by the city attorney's office dated August 21, 2020, which was served via certified mail and also posting at the subject property. Proof of posting of the, of tonight's notice indicating it was posted back on August 21, 2020. Updated owner and encumbrance report prepared by Chirco Title Agency dated August 20, 2020, showing the property record as being U.S. Bank Trust, NAS trustee for LSF9 Master Participation Trust, and also Lilian Peoples as to another section of the property, along with all of the previous notices that have been served on the interested parties, including the transcripts from the prior hearings. At this time, I would turn the proceedings over to Ms. Van Herren for further questions.
Thank you, Ms. Van Herren.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. The dangerous building process was started on this property for failure to certify as a vacant structure and maintain the property in December of 2018. The property owner, U.S. Bank Trust, NAS trustee, LSF9, has owned the property since December of 2016. From the lack of water use, it appears that this home has been vacant since July of 2017. The property owner pays the water bill as well as the tax bill. There was a show cause hearing held in August of 2019, and council ordered 60 days to finalize a vacant structure certificate. An inspection was conducted on the vacant structure in July of 2019, and a long list of violations were found. They're listed on the memo that you have, some of them including permit work for electrical and plumbing and a water heater, a couple other items that required permits, a new furnace. So they did some, some work on the house, and then they abandoned it. We recommend that city council require file completion date of the violations within 60 days or schedule for demo.
Thank you. Do we have anyone on this meeting for 17050 Juliana that wanna speak on behalf of this property? Say no, I'm gonna go to council.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion, if you're ready for motion.
I am.
Okay, I'm, I'll make a motion to require the owners to complete the list of violations within 60 days or come back to us. I, I think the house is nice, so I don't really want to work it down mode. And last time I did do it, when we gave them, started it, when we gave them the subsidy. So hopefully it motivates them to finish the list.
Support, please? Or discussion, maybe? Council?
I'll support it for discussion.
Thank you. Moving support, please call the row.
Oh, I think.
Can I ask one question?
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't. Hands on there, it's different. That's Mr. Demonicus.
About all the permit work, should we be, I mean, I, I don't wanna, some of this seems like it could be dangerous, Ms. Van Herren, if we don't inspect some of these things. You know, if there's like a carbon monoxide leak or something from a furnace or something like that, should we be doing anything about that? If they don't do anything within the 60 days, maybe we could just make that?
Well, we typically don't do inspections unless they have permits. And you're, and you're absolutely right. Some of it could be potentially dangerous, probably dangerous, more dangerous if there were occupants of the structure, given that it's vacant, it's, you know, it's not as likely to, I guess it could still result in some potentially serious I guess it could still result in some potentially serious situations, but yeah, without, without knowing if the work was done properly, we have no way of knowing if there's hazardous conditions.
What are your thoughts, Councilman DeMonaco?
I think it's just one of those situations again where we're just stuck kind of in a bad spot again, but I think we should give Ms. Lucido's motion a shot.
Sounds good to me. You're moving, support it, call the roll.
Person Lucido?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Councilperson DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes, moving on right along, we are at property one-six-two-one-three-nine Mile Road, Joyce E. Fergan and Thomas R. Fergan, trustees and National City Bank and occupants. Mr. Albright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Richard Albright appearing on behalf of the City of East Point. This is a date and time set for a show cause hearing regarding the property located at one-six-two-one-three-nine Mile Road. Madam Mayor, I'd like to have several exhibits entered into the record, the first of which is a memorandum prepared by Ms. Van Heren dated August twenty-four, twenty-twenty. That memorandum also contains a picture of the subject property, which is located on the back of the memorandum. Also, a notice of this evening's proceedings prepared by the city attorney's office dated August twenty-first, twenty-twenty. Proof of posting of the notice of tonight's proceedings indicating that the notice was also posted at the subject property back on August twenty-first of twenty-twenty. Updated owner and encumbrance report prepared by Chirco Title Agency.
With the repairs.
Which is dated August twentieth, twenty-twenty, along with the previous notices that were sent to the property owners along with the report and order of the hearing officer and the transcripts. Madam Mayor, I did hear somebody speaking, so there may be somebody on behalf of the property owner present. But at this time, I would turn the matter over to Ms. Van Heren to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Van Heren.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. The dangerous building process was started on this property for illegal occupancy and failure to have it inspected as a rental property or vacant structure. The property is owned by the commercial property owner at Fergan's Auto Parts directly next to the court building. This house is Zoned B three, it was occupied as a residential structure for many years, but then vacated in September of two thousand nineteen. According to the ordinance, this was occupied as a legal non-conforming use. Since it has ceased to be used as a residential property for well over a year, it's lost its non-conforming status and can only be used in accordance with the zoning district in which it's located. That's according to Article X or XXI of the zoning ordinance, I guess that would be twenty-one if I remember correctly. We attempted for some time to get it registered and inspected as a rental property as we could verify that there were occupants, but not that it was not owner occupied. Mr. Fergan would not register it as a rental property. Mr. Fergan advised that he was using it as an office, so we gave him the option to convert it to a commercial property. He was concerned that with what an inspection report would require and would not agree to a commercial use. He also discussed demolishing the structure and using the property in a commercial manner. Besides the unregistered non-conforming house, the rear of the property is being used along with the auto repair business next door, also owned by Mr. Fergan. And there are parking vehicles awaiting repair and a large motorhome that has occasionally been occupied by a caretaker. Mr. Fergan was not able to appear at the hearing and we requested compliance within sixty days. We recommend city council order this property to be registered and inspected as a vacant structure within sixty days or scheduled for demolition.
Is anyone out there for this property, one-six-two-one-three-nine Mile Road, Mr. Fergan? If not, I'm gonna turn it to council.
And so when was the last time we talked to Mr. Fergan, Ms. Van Heren?
Well, at the date that we scheduled the dangerous building hearing that was held in November, no, I'm sorry. I'll find that date.
I guess, August nineteenth, twenty-nineteen, I think is what I have in my notes here.
Okay, sorry, I didn't have that right in front of me. I did speak with him then, he actually came to the hearing, he's elderly and he was having some health issues and he came and he had to leave before he was actually able to get in, before the hearing officer. And I spoke with him on the phone a few days after that and so he's aware of what's, of what's going on with the property. I'm sure he received this notice and was aware of it, why he didn't appear, I don't know.
I think, I guess generally my concern is, I guess if we ask McKenna, right, they'd probably want us to, you know, transition into B three status on this, this area, right? That'd be the whole point of our zoning.
Yeah.
And so nobody, and you said so, nobody can now, now that it's been unoccupied? You can't, even though the last, I'm trying to understand this part, where, so they were, it was legal non-conforming. But how that they've left, then there's no point in going back or you can't go back now, so it has to be a business use?
That's right, so after it's been vacated, the, the legal non-conforming status has been discontinued for a period of one year, then they can no longer use it except in compliance and conformity with the current or zoning district, which is B three. So now it has to be, I mean, it could be registered as a vacant structure and sit there for ten years, the city wouldn't require anything other than, you know, occasional inspections and maintenance. Or it can be used in compliance with the B three zoning district.
I think I'm leaning that, I don't know how everyone else is feeling, leaning towards the recommended motion that we give sixty days or scheduled for, for demo then.
I get support on that?
Support.
Okay, moving, support it. Councilwoman Lucido, you have anything to say on this?
Nope.
Okay, call roll, please.
Madam Mayor, I apologize, who is the motion maker?
Councilman DeMonaco.
DeMonaco and seconded by Mr. Curly?
Yes, sir.
All right, councilperson DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Lastly, we are at two-two-seven-six-three Oakwood for the D Portfolio Series Four LLC occupants. Anyone here wish to speak after Mary Van Heren speaks, please be prepared to speak. Mr. Albright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Richard Albright on behalf of the City of East Point. This is a date and time set for the show cause hearing regarding the property located at two-two-seven-six-three Oakwood. I'd like to have several exhibits entered into the record, the first of which is a memorandum prepared by Ms. Van Heren dated August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty with a recommendation of city administration. The next exhibit is a notice of this evening's proceedings prepared by the city attorney's office dated August twenty-first, twenty-twenty. A proof of posting indicating that the notice of tonight's proceedings was also posted at the subject property back on August twenty-first of twenty-twenty. An updated owner and encumbrance report identifying the owner of the property as the D Portfolio Series Four LLC, a Delaware Limited Liability Company along with all of the other previous notices that had been sent to the property owners and posted at the subject property along with the transcripts from the previous hearings and the report to the hearing officer. At this time, I turn it over to Ms. Van Heren for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Van Heren.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. The dangerous building process was started on this property for failure to certify as a rental property and maintain the property in February of two thousand nineteen. The dangerous building hearing was held in April of nineteen, two thousand nineteen, and an attorney appeared on behalf of the owner. We recommended at that time sixty days to resolve the final inspection and get the property certified. Inspections have been done, but there remain incomplete violations and then I listed them on the property or on the memo. And one of them is there was no heat in the bedroom. Missing smoke detectors and then there were problems with the porch and patio. We recommend city council order the property owner to finalize a rental certification process within sixty days or order the property vacated.
Anyone here want to speak on this property?
I cannot understand a word she says.
Anybody would like to speak on this property? No one? Council?
I agree, I mean, I agree with the recommendation. Except for the fact that because of COVID, I don't know if we can order the property vacated at this time, we might have to wait until after. Mr. Monaco?
I was just going to actually ask if Brian or whoever the, yeah, I think Brian, you're the host account, if you could mute anybody that's not speaking.
Yes, Tom's iPhone, I did mute them, I don't know who that is.
Yep, appreciate it, thank you. And yeah, I agree if, I mean, if we could just get a smoke detector, these are some, I mean, I guess it's not somewhat minor if you live, if someone lives in those second or third bedrooms, I guess there, but I agree with you, Ms. Lucido, then, we, but I'd motion then that we order the property to finalize the rental certification process within sixty days. And I think I'm going to leave it at that then, since, you know, you've got the pandemic going on right now.
I give that support.
Moving, support it, please call the roll.
Councilperson DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Can I get a motion for adjournment, please?
Support.
Moving, support it, I don't know who was, who made the motion and supported it.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Councilperson DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes, I know we have to go to our seven o'clock, but I want to give council some time to, well, you want council, like ten minutes? Five to ten minutes, we have a short.
Yeah, ten minutes would be great, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, well, right here it says it's seven eleven, so just get it, round it off down, let's do seven-twenty, that'll fine?
That's great, sure.
Okay, thank you, everyone who attended, we'll be right back at seven-twenty. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor Owens and Mr. Curly?
Yeah.
Uh, I sent you guys.